I'd like to call this meeting of the Yankton Board of City Commissioners to order. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Gross.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Knopf.
Here.
Mybaum.
Here.
Miner.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Mayor Hoffner.
Present.
Senior Manager Nelson.
Here.
Senior Attorney Denver.
Here.
We established a quorum; we will continue with our business, and welcome everyone. Number two of the routine businesses are minutes you have before from the regular meeting, October 23rd, as well as the work session, October 23rd.
I move the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? All opposed, say aye. You got that? All in favor? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same sign. Good, you are awake, congratulations. Number three is a schedule of bills you have before you.
I move that we pay the bills.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye. Motion carried. Now we have the city manager's report. Amy.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, and members of the public. Couple of things to talk about tonight. Just a reminder to everyone that the Holiday Festival of Lights is around the corner. That's taking place in the Meridian District on November 30th. So if you would like to have a float or lighted entry in the parade, we do have entry forums. You can also get those at City Hall. The theme is Winter Wonderland, and I think the snowflakes went up today, so we're ready. So if anyone would like to participate, it'd be great. That event's grown, partnership between the Meridian District and the City of Yankton. So we look forward to having everyone attend and participate. Also, you have a flyer in front of you, commissioners, regarding the City of Yankton Food Drive. Our departments are going to be competing to collect food for folks in the community that might have a harder time. We're competing for donuts or breakfast pizza, so the prize isn't that big, but it's an important venture. You are on the city manager's team. I need all the help I can get. You can also detract points from other departments by bringing certain items. So take a look at that, that'll happen in December. Our food drop-off will be in my office in City Hall, so I'll be requesting donations for that. Also, I wanted to bring forward that we have been working with the media, and it will be posted on our website, but when we have inclement weather, whether that be snow or ice coming up here in the next few months, we may be postponing solid waste and garbage collection. So we will still be collecting, we may have to postpone it. That's both for the convenience and safety of the customers, the residents, as well as for safety and convenience of our folks that are driving snowplows or picking up solid waste and recycling. So please keep looking at media outlets for that. It may or may not mean we're plowing, so you still have to be advised of when a snow emergency is called, but we want to make sure people understand that as well. Menards contacted me today. In the past, we have allowed their employees to park behind the Menards during Black Friday shopping, so that all the parking spots can be available for the shoppers, and I'm okay with that. I said, "Too late for me to get it on the commission," but I think I can go ahead and say that's all right, unless there's any problem here. They are always good about bagging the signs, and then the following Monday, they take those off, and it's no parking again. So I'll make the police department aware if everyone's okay with that. Almost done here. Todd Larson and his department are working on a policy over the next few months regarding sponsorships and advertising. So as you know, we're getting a little more into things like special events, and some of our departments and functions, like Fox Run Golf Course and Summit Activity Center, sell advertising. We want to make sure that we're not soliciting, you know, members of the public and businesses for things. We want to make a clear definition between what a sponsorship is and what a donation is, and the difference between sponsoring an event and fundraising. So we'd like to bring forward a policy to you all to take a look at in the future, just to have that clarified. So we're working on doing some research, see what other cities are doing, and we'll be talking about that with you all in the new year. Also, the commission may remember that some time ago, the National Park Service contacted us about doing a land transfer for some land near our Nebraska wells. The direction at that time was to do some research and work with the National Park Service. Park Service has picked that up again, so you may see that coming before you, maybe at the very tail end of the year or early in the beginning of the year. Last thing, please check your drop box. I'll have a couple of things in there for you commissioners to take a look at, just working papers on some upcoming agenda items. So I'll send that out as a reminder on Friday to you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right, we're moving on to number five, under routine business. This is the time and place for public appearances. If anybody would like from the audience to address the commission on an item that is not on the agenda, please come forward. State your name, please.
Hello, my name's Dan Clemmish. I am the Director for Yankton for the James River Water Development District, and I just wanted to come and address you and let you know a little bit about what our board does. Our board's mission is to work with various levels of government, as well as landowners, the general public, to improve water quality in the district through education, technical or financial support. And projects that lead to the completion of our mission may include, but it's not limited to, incentive programs that support best management practices with education, research, technical and financial assistance, protection of domestic water and wastewater systems for safe drinking water, fire protection, not including normal maintenance and less damage by an act of God, tree planting, bank stabilization for rivers, lakes and streams, infrastructure development, such as small dams for flood reduction, and water quality engineering or environmental studies. The counties that are included in the James River Water Development District are Marshall, Brown, Spink, Beadle, Sandborne, Davison, Aurora, Hanson, Hutchinson, and Yankton. So it's 10 counties, so it's the largest water development district in the state by far. Most people don't realize that 40% of eastern South Dakota actually drains into the James River. More of eastern South Dakota drains through the James River than even the Missouri River. Some examples of the project that we have funded in Yankton County are nearly 20 small earthen dams that have been structured in this county alone. These small earthen dams reduce erosion, trap sediment and runoff, and help prevent flooding damage to our roads and bridges. We also funded a new fire hydrant in northern Yankton County, and another one in eastern Leesterville, South Dakota, east of Leesterville, South Dakota, and this helps with rural fire suppression. We also granted $61,425 to the City of Leesterville to repair their water towers and replace unserviceable water mains. And we've donated $10,000 to every, all 10 counties in our district toward the purchase of grass drills, and these are utilized for planting CRP grasses and buffer strips with the new buffer strip program. We've also awarded $13,250 to Utica Township. Utica Township is an organized township and was unable to find any local agencies that would support a bridge repair on 438th Avenue, so the James River Water Development stepped in and helped them keep a bridge. Also, with the town of Mission Hill, we awarded $25,000 to the town of Mission Hill to replace water service lines in the city. And we recently awarded $1,250 for a water study in the town of Owen. In addition, we do $12,500 each year to Yankton County to plant trees. So one of the areas that I'm most concerned with is the protection of our domestic water supply, and so I'd like to show you guys a map of our shallow aquifers for Yankton County right here. And as you may know or may not know, this is the lower part of the Lower James, Missouri Aquifer, and the wells for the City of Yankton are located right on the Missouri River. There's a lot of interoperability with the James River and the Missouri River, and in interconnection, so when the James River rises, the level in the aquifer also rises. And when it goes down, the level in the aquifer also goes down. And there are areas where the river, James River, directly recharges the aquifer, and there are areas where the aquifer drains into the river. And I said, "Why is this so important?" It's the same aquifer where the city gets its water supply from. I get my drinking water from this aquifer every day, and so do my kids. And there's a lot of issues with water quality going on within the whole state, and really in the whole country. Des Moines recently had to spend millions of dollars to build a new water plant, and $10,000 a day to denitrify the water. So I just want to let you know that there are potentially some issues that could affect the Lower James, Missouri Aquifer. Does the board have any questions for me? If you have any water quality projects, please let me know, we'd be happy to help you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to item two under routine. We're going to the consent agenda, and if there's no argument, we will combine 11 items. Any objection? The first one is a work session for November 27th in room 114 in this building, regard to the golf course. That may or may not, depending upon how the schedules with staff and everything goes, so we'll keep you informed, but we're planning a work session on that date, next meeting, two weeks from today. Number two is an alley assessment set public hearing for memorandum 17-232 and resolution Number three is a possible quorum event, and that is December 8th for the Christmas party, no commission action. Number four, setting a date for planning advance. The staff would like January 20th, and if there's any, enough people can come on the 20th, you'd rather have that than the 13th, correct?
Correct, and Mayor, that is a Saturday, which is different than what we've done in the past, so if that won't work for you all, let me know. We can also, the 13th was an alternate date that Planning District 3 provided.
Number five is fireworks requests from Holiday Lights Committee, memorandum 17-242. And then we have the mayor appointment for the Joint Powers Board, 17-239, and the mayor appointment to the bid board, 17-240. Then number eight, a peddler's license application, memorandum 17-244. Number nine, establish a public hearing for the transfer of location on off sale on next meeting, 27th. And number 10, establish a public hearing for the transfer of location on and off alcoholic And the final one, establish another public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages, Entertain a motion for the consent.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to old business. Number one, this is the time and place for a public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages, special event, memorandum 17-236.
Move the memorandum.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, we'll do a voice vote on that.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number two, under old business, this is the time and place for another public hearing for the renewal alcoholic beverage licenses, memorandum 17-237.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. We'll move on to new business. Number one, permanent pavement marking closeout memorandum 17-231.
Move the memorandum.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number two, under new business, is West City Limits Road Railroad Reconstruct Agreement, memorandum 17-233.
Move the memorandum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience?
I got a question, I just, because in the pack, I don't recall there being like a, any kind of photo or image. Is this just the bike path, so it'll be off the West City Limits Road? Because it's a pedestrian crossing, correct? This will include the roadway crossing, and it'll include an additional width for pedestrian crossing. And then I assume it's, it would match up with the, so will the, it'll match up with the bike path, correct? Yes. Yep. Is the bike path going to be right next to the road there, or will it be over, like towards the ditch? It'll be closer to the road with the railroad regulations, that's where it ended up being, will be placed. Okay, thanks.
I have a question, Adam. So I was recently in Iowa, and in a couple of the communities I was in there, they were kind of bragging about the quiet zones they were able to establish in their community regarding trains. They had upgraded the train track enough that the train didn't have to blow the whistle before it comes through town. And I know that Rapid City was studying this issue. You know, we've upgraded some crossings. Do you have any idea what level we have to get all of our crossings before something like that would be possible here?
I would have to look into that one.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number three, under new business, Walnut Street, Second Street to Fourth Street curb alignment, memorandum 17-234.
Move the memorandum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Amy, I think you have some comments regarding this.
Yes, I know that this was all presented to you at the work session, so what we're talking about here is the street shape for, I guess, a non-engineering nomenclature, and the way that that is going to be designed. So this particular design still allows for two-lane traffic, also allows for an easy way to block off the street for the special events that we tend to have in the downtown. Want the commission and public to be aware that we worked with Design South Dakota and the folks involved in that process, as well as with downtown business owners. As you know, not everyone is unanimous, I guess, about their opinion about how this should look. Some folks have indicated they'd like to see no traffic on the streets. Some people have said one way, but this was the consensus of the planning groups and what the business owners talked with us, and what we've had communication with them. Should this pass tonight, at our next meeting, Todd and Adam and I will be discussing with you a contract with Stockwell Engineers to provide for landscaping for not only this area, but also some of our public parking lots and some of our landscaping pits near some of the bumpouts that were done this year. We'd like to make a full commitment to a big change downtown and a big visible change for the public all at once. Both projects would be done before Riverboat Days. When this is bid out, if approved, we'd ask that the contractor have it done congruent with landscaping, if approved, as well as the curb alignment before Riverboat Days of 2018. We think this is a smart way to bring the project forward. So tonight, we're just talking about the street scape shape, or the alignment, and then we're talking about landscaping and amenities on the street at our next commission meeting, if this is approved. So I just want to clarify that and answer any questions, since it's sort of a two-step process.
Don't we normally see the design before we approve the concept? Or was what we saw two weeks ago the concept, and now to get the design, we have to go to the next step?
Yes, what you saw, and I wasn't here, but what you saw last, two weeks ago, or it may have even been three now with the long month, was the curb cut. So the design of the actual street scape, and I think it was also presented to you some landscaping concepts and features, things like that. You know, we thought it made good sense to bring this forward to you all first. If this isn't approved, then we need to kind of take a step back with Stockwell on some of the design features, because they might look differently.
Can you really get a design done and bid between now and Riverboat Days?
Our engineering department says yes, we can. That was my question too, but I think they can. Yes, that's why we need to move forward soon.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the work that our staff has done. You know, I was at the Design South Dakota sessions and the South Dakota State University student sessions, and really was able to watch them interact with the public and take a very serious approach to this issue and really try to incorporate all those ideas. And so I thought the plan did a good job of taking everything we heard and came to a place where we're not able to maybe make everyone happy, but incorporated a lot of those ideas, and I think it will be really successful at building that bridge from the bridge, the Meridian Bridge, to the downtown and making it more pedestrian-friendly. And I like that we're not only talking about Walnut Street, but we're talking about along Second Street, doing some landscaping and other improvements along there to improve the pedestrian experience, especially when we have a lot of businesses really popping up south of Second Street, so that's really encouraging as well.
Any other questions? From the audience? Roll call, please.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number four, under new business, is the change order and closeout of the West City Limits Road Project memorandum 17-245.
Move the memorandum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
City manager, any particular reason why your recommendation isn't included on this?
I believe that came, let me just get to this here. I'm still on the curb alignment. Yep, I got it. No, other than it may have been edited, you know, maybe there wasn't edit done before it got my signature on it, but I do concur with the recommendation from our civil engineer.
Any other questions? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number five is another change order and closeout for the 21st Street Project memorandum 17-249.
So moved.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number six, under new business, is one more change order and closeout for the 25th Street Project memorandum 17-247.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Number seven, under new business, Special Events Parking for the Holiday Lights Parade, memorandum 17-241 and resolution 17-60.
So moved.
Second.
It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to number eight, under new business, Request for a Pickup Purchase at Changon Airport, memorandum 17-243 and resolution 17-61.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Miner.
Aye.
Moser.
Aye.
Gross.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Knopf.
Aye.
Mybaum.
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner.
Aye, motion carried. Finally, number 10, Resolution in Support of Agriculture, memorandum 17-248 and resolution 17-62. What's your pleasure?
Move the memorandum.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion from the commission? From the audience?
I wanted to, because Charlie had put together the resolution, I'm assuming, did you get a lot of commission input?
I got a little. I'm sorry, I got a little commission input. So yes, this is not one person's work, this is several, the work of several people.
Any more discussion within the commission? From the public? From the audience?
I wanted to, because Charlie had put together the resolution, I'm assuming. Did you get a lot of commission input?
I got a little. I'm sorry, I got a little commission input. So yes, this is not one person's work. This is several, the work of several people.
Any more discussion within the commission?
I have the opportunity to read your proposal here. I'm Dale Hebde, Hebde Produce. We're not a certified organic farm, but we are an organic farm out there. My first thing is, I don't know why the city of Yankton's even involved in this discussion. But since you chose to become involved, we felt obligated to come here and raise our objections on a couple of different fronts. If the hog barns are ultimately built, one of those is going to be within 400, well, let me back up, about 800 feet from my asparagus patch. Pathogens carry in the dust out of hog confinements. If I have a problem, and this was my presentation at the city, at the county commissioner level, I'm ruined. I said, "If you approve this, we need air quality control monitors." My response I got was, "Good luck with that." The attorney that was representing the builders of this made the comment at the meeting, "I certainly wouldn't want them next to me." As I look at, we have your kids in the Yankton School District. We have peoples at farmers' markets that are buying our product. The only time we ever wash our product, you know, asparagus, we'll stick with that, is if the ground's muddy. Otherwise, I'm not concerned about a pathogen being out there. The quality and care we take of our soils. Okay? Same way when we're talking about spinach, when we're talking about lettuce, when we're talking about tomatoes, and we're talking about peppers. Anything out there has the potential to gather that dust or pathogen on there, and all of a sudden, you got a health issue. Do I need to do this for a living? No. I'm passionate about the quality of produce that we raise out there. I can do a lot of other things that would put a lot more money in my pocket than doing this. So I come back to, number one, I don't know why Yankton County or the city of Yankton wants to become involved in a county issue, whether statement in support of or not. We do production value-added agriculture out there on our farm, as some of you may be aware. We closed our store at the mall that was there for three years because we didn't get enough local traffic to cover labor costs to keep the store open. So when you talk about the community of Yankton supporting small-scale agriculture, sometimes I wiggle just a little bit at that statement. We go to Vermillion on a Thursday night and in season. Vermillion will outperform Saturday morning Yankton 2 to 1. Look at the per capita income and look at the population base that draws into Vermillion versus what's here in Yankton. So if you're going to make that statement, I'm sitting here saying, "Sow me the financials that it's true." And I guess I'll end it again with, "I don't understand why the city of Yankton is taking a stand in favor or opposed to this. It's not a city of Yankton issue, it's a county issue." That's all I got.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Gross?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Conoff?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Epstein.
Moser?
Aye.
Mayor Hopper?
Nay. Motion passed. I would entertain a motion now to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Hey, Fran.